Okay, counsel, we're gonna have roll call. Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present with Counselor Daniel attending via Zoom conference and Counselor Carson previously requesting to be excused.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda as presented, allowing Ms. Daniel via Zoom and excusing Mr. Carson from the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we have citizens complete a comment card like this, and then you'll come up to the podium and say a few, your comments that you may have. We ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, in which we keep a clock right here, I will politely ask you to end your comments and have a seat. So far, I only have one. Did everyone have an opportunity to fill out any comment cards? Okay, so I have Mr. Don Thompson?
Yes, thank you, counsel. My name is Don Thompson. I live at 924 Eighth Street in Alamosa, and I'd like to speak on the, what's entitled to the Safety Stop Bill, a bill that has used in the state of Iowa for a number of years. I've been riding a bicycle on a daily basis for the last forty-nine years, and of course, consequently, I have my impressions as to what's appropriate, what's not. Bicycles, as many bicyclists don't know, are subject to the traffic laws, the same as a motor vehicle. A stop sign for a motor vehicle says, "Your forward motion will be stopped." Well, on a bicycle, when your forward motion is stopped, you have a tendency to fall over, especially if you're clipped in, and so very few bicyclists come to a complete stop at a stop sign. In the same respect, a traffic light, when a vehicle comes up, usually the traffic light recognizes that and changes. While CDOT attempts to make traffic lights recognize bicycles, I say it fails more often than it succeeds. And consequently, those two laws, I would like to see you adopt here in Alamosa, as allowing a bicyclist to treat a stop sign as a yield sign, giving the right-of-way to a vehicle as they're preceding them, but not having to meet the law of coming to a complete stop. And in the same respect, if they come to a traffic light and can't trigger that light and there's no traffic, they can legally continue through that traffic light after coming to a stop. It bothers me that our police department does not traffic, enforce traffic laws against bicyclists the way they should. As a bicyclist, when I see someone riding the wrong way or doing some other flagrant violation, I would like to see the police stop them because I have the feeling that a motorist gets upset seeing that, and I, as a bicyclist, consequently am somewhat put in a position where the next time they come by me, they might still be upset. I would hope that you would adopt the Safety Stop Regulation as part of your changes to the traffic ordinances. I wish that when our state legislator passed this, they would have passed it for the state instead of saying that each municipality has to adopt it separately. And I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Heather, Eric, do you have any follow-up, or is this gonna be something we discuss later in the agenda?
I think Eric will review some of this on the Agenda Review item, but I do want to make it clear that Mr. Thompson, many months ago, brought this to our attention after the legislation had been passed at the state level and has remained interested in this. And so, it's something that's been a priority for him, and he's wanted to see brought before counsel. It's also something that we probably have some differences of opinion on, but there's not a strong opinion necessarily from a city perspective either, but things to consider. And so, this is an area that the public input is really important from a council perspective.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have ceremonial items. We have the introduction of new police officers. I believe Chief is gonna come up to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for having me. So it's, once again, another exciting night for the police department. I actually have three new officers to introduce tonight. First, I'd like to start with Taylor Birch. Please come up. And I've already instructed them they can't leave until they get a few comments in. So Taylor grew up in Alamosa, Colorado. She graduated from the Alamosa High School. Once completing high school, Taylor enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. Taylor was honorably discharged from the Marine Corps. Once out of the military, Taylor knew she wanted to get into law enforcement. Taylor wanted to join law enforcement because they have always had a huge impact on her life growing up. Taylor graduated from the Trinidad State Junior College Police Academy in May of 2019. Taylor is also a volunteer firefighter with the Alamosa Fire Department. Taylor recently completed her FTO program, or her FTO training, and is assigned to the Alamosa Police Department Patrol Division. So the part about her being a volunteer firefighter, you're gonna hear that a couple times tonight. Would you like me to move on with the next? Just so you can question them all and kinda razzle them up here in a few minutes.
Sure, sure.
I'll just get my part done. Nick Smith, come up, please. So Nick grew up in Center, Colorado. Nick graduated from the Sangre de Cristo High School. He attended Adams State University before enlisting in the United States Army and Colorado National Guard. Nick has served six years as an infantryman in the Army, and I believe he's currently still serving with the National Guard. Correct? Nick started his law enforcement career as a detention deputy for the Rio Grande Sheriff's Department before attending the Trinidad State Junior College Police Academy. Nick worked for the Alamosa County Sheriff's Department for three years, first as a detention deputy, and he moved up to a patrol deputy. During his time with the Alamosa County Sheriff's Department, he became a firearms instructor, a field training officer. Nick is also a firearms instructor with the local police academy. Nick recently completed his FTO program, and he is assigned as well to the Alamosa Police Department Patrol Division. Cody Van Rye, please come up. So Cody Van Rye is from Alamosa, Colorado. Cody graduated from the Alamosa High School in 2012. Cody graduated from Sterling College in Sterling, Kansas, with a bachelor's in sports management, and he also graduated from Adams State University with his master's degree in sports psychology. Cody graduated from the Trinidad State Junior College Police Academy as well in May of Cody worked at the Alamosa Police Department for nine months while he attended the police academy as a community service officer for the City of Alamosa Police Department. Cody is also a volunteer firefighter with the Alamosa Fire Department. Cody recently completed his FTO program, and he is also assigned to the Alamosa Police Department Patrol Division. So I'm very excited to introduce all three of these new officers to our city council. If you wanna get a picture, I'm gonna get them lined up real quick. Do you mind if she gets a picture real quick before you guys talk to her?
So what we'll do is we'll let each one of you say a few little comments, if you like, and then council will make some comments after that, okay? All right, whichever one wants to go first, just talk into the mic.
Yeah, I'll go. So I'll keep it short and sweet. I just wanna say I'm humbled by this whole experience, and I wanna thank everybody who helped me gain this position, and that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor.
Same thing for me. Thank you guys for the opportunity. I'm glad to serve the community that I live in and grew up in.
Thank you, Nick.
Guess I'll slurp that. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Proud and grateful to serve the community of Alamosa. Can't wait to continue the career.
Thank you, Cody. Okay, counsel? Counselor Brawls?
No, I'll say congratulations. It's great to see young police officers coming to this, coming to the profession. And what's more impressive, it's you're homegrown. Love to have you here, and welcome, welcome. We need you badly, and it's great. I'm happy that you chose this profession. I think you did a great job, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Hensley?
So I also would like to welcome the three of you. Thank you so much. I think our police force does a great job, and so it's great to have the three of you as addition. I obviously know Cody a little better. I, I've known Cody since he was very young, used to, obviously with my stepson, always hang out with my stepson, which is also your cousin. But at the same time, I remember you living right around the corner from us, and it's great to see you grow up and to what you're doing now, and so congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Grealio?
I too. I'd like to welcome you guys, and it's good to see our country is prepared, our veterans are coming back to our community and participating with our community, and it's good to see both of you veterans with the family that we got now. Cody, your grandpa used to sit over here also, Arvin, so he's probably proud of you and as your dad is and mom, so welcome to the family.
Thank you, Counselor Grealio. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, echo what Mr. Grealio said. Thank you for your service to our country. And welcome to the team, Chief. Thank you for getting this done and getting us closer to being at full staff. It's great to see our local training programs to use and getting local people. Just, I always see Taylor at the gym, and she gets after it, boy, her and her brother, it's like, wow. So they're ready to go. I also taught Taylor my student teaching year, and I had no idea what I was doing, but she helped me learn the ropes of Alamosa High School, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor, Nick, and Cody, I also would like to wish you all the very best, and I wish you much success. Want you to know that city council and our community support you and your efforts and the things that you're gonna be doing to make our community great. So we wish you extreme best. And Chief, thank you so very much. I'm so glad to see you able to recruit from within the San Luis Valley. All three went to San Luis Valley High Schools, and that's something to be extremely proud of. And also to the new officers, I want you to know that not only are you joining a team, but you're joining a family, and we're so glad to have you as a part of our family. I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Yeah, it is amazing. That's really cool. Okay, counsel? Up next, we have on the agenda Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay? If not, please start voting. Okay? Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. Up next on the agenda, we have Business Brought Forward by City Staff Finance.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. You have before you ordinance number 25-2019. It's the pay plan that would come into effect January 1st of 2020. Every year, the city staff evaluates our pay scale, and with the increase in minimum wage, it causes, again, it causes compression between our pay grades. So the city manager spent considerable time evaluating those compressions, and we tried, she was successful in reaching parity, and it's not totally complete parity for all of the pay raises, but it does relieve some of the compressions within the pay grades and brings us into compliance with minimum wage at the same time. Do you have any questions in regards to the pay plan?
Counselor Grealio?
If not, I'll make the motion that we pass on first reading, ordinance number 25. Set it for a public hearing on October 16th at 7:00 or soon thereafter.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can I just say something real fast, too? So Judy did a great job covering the pay plan. The other item that's part of how the ordinance was written is the municipal judge and the city manager aren't part of the pay plan. Historically, what council has done is whatever grade 14 gets is also then applied to the judge and the city manager, so it is consistent with that, but I wanna make sure you guys are aware that that is what the ordinance is covering. So that 3% that is at grade 12 through 14 would be applied also to the city manager and the municipal judge as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Please start voting. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, good. Under the finance, we have item B, the first reading of ordinance number 24-2019.
Yes, Mayor, that's the ordinance making the annual appropriation for fiscal year 2020. We worked really hard on this budget. It's very lean. There's not fat anywhere that we could find, because if we found it, we trimmed it off. There are, as you know, there always will be probably some budget amendments, but this is as close as we could come with the information that we have on hand. And there are, in some instances, there will be a reduction in some of the fund balances which council has approved in the past. It doesn't reduce any of the fund balances below the taper or the 5% council mandated fund balance. Is there any questions on the budget?
Reduction in the fund balance is not because of the operating cost, it is in order to provide more from a street's perspective and a few other capital needs that are in the capital plan. So just to make sure that's clear.
Yes, that's correct.
All righty, counsel? Any questions and comment? Counselor Vehill?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I move that we approve on first reading and set ordinance number 24-2019, an ordinance making the annual appropriations for the fiscal year 2020, and set it for a public hearing on October 16th or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you so very much for cutting the fat and keeping it lean, so good job. You're welcome. Okay, start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Okay, up next, under item two, we have Police First Reading of Ordinance Number 26-2019.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is an ordinance that would adopt the 2018 edition of the Model Traffic Code. As council is probably aware, our traffic laws are governed by the Model Traffic Code. The current, or the immediate preceding version is the 2010 version, which we are currently under. The 2018 version came out last year, and, or early this year, I don't recall, but it is, makes very few changes, none that I really am aware of, between 2010 and the 2018 code, none that are substantive. We do, as staff, recommend a couple of changes that are substantive. One is to adopt a provision that would set a speed limit of 20 miles an hour in parking lots, which is not in the Model Traffic Code, but has arisen as an issue that the police department becomes aware of based on complaints and observations. Right now, they can write up people who speed through traffic lots under a careless driving provision of the Model Traffic Code, but that's not as clean as just being able to have a speed limit set there. The second is deleting the penalties and procedures portion of the Model Traffic Code. We probably could have done that when we adopted the 2010 version. We have our own penalties and procedures. The council reviews on a periodic basis, setting penalties for various ordinance violations, and in that resolution that sets those up are penalties for the Model Traffic Code violations, so we don't need those there. And then the third item for your consideration, as Don Thompson alluded to in his comments earlier, was that the Colorado Legislature has passed legislation that allows municipalities and counties to adopt alternative regulations for bicycles and electric scooters that provide for bicycles to approach intersections that have a stop sign at a reasonable speed and proceed through them, once ascertaining that there's no, no oncoming traffic interference, without coming to a stop. The default reasonable speed as set by the legislature in that legislation is 15 miles an hour. As you all know, I am a cyclist as well, and I can tell you that that is fast to approach a stop sign. I have my own opinions about this particular part of it. I'm not going to let you know them, because if I did, I'd walk down there and just talk as a member of the public, but I think staff does think that it's important to hear from the public. You've heard from Mr. Thompson, you'll have a public hearing at the next reading. So the reason for that review is that although staff recommendation is not to adopt different regulations for bicycles and electric scooters, I would recommend that on first reading, you go ahead and approve it and leave that in there, just as a placeholder. It's easy to remove it, it's easy to put it back in, too, but that way, it's in the materials for discussion at second reading and public hearing. If you have any questions about how or what staff's recommendation not to adopt separate regulations is based on, the chief is here to be able to speak to that. But I think a lot of those issues will be highlighted when the matter comes up for public hearing. So those are the three areas that are kind of up for discussion in the code. I don't think that eliminating the penalties and procedures is really controversial, but you will want to think about the speed limit in parking lots and what to do about the bicycle and electric scooter special provisions.
Okay, Counselor Vehill?
Mayor, I'm curious to, well, I'm looking forward to the second reading and public hearing, talking about the scooters and the bikes. I'd like, I hope we get a lot more input on that. I'd like to know more on both sides why.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, I think an email from the High Valley Cyclists was probably shared with council, and I would expect some one or more persons from that organization to be present at the public hearing.
Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the parking lot. 20 miles an hour still seems really high to me. Can we talk about why that was the threshold we picked versus 10 or 15?
The chief is probably the best one to talk about that.
Did you, did you hear her question?
Yeah. She's asking why 20 miles an hour?
Instead of a lower, yeah, instead of a lower speed?
You know, I think that's still kind of open for discussion, possibly at a later time. I think we agreed on 20 miles an hour. It's a reasonable speed. Right now, we have people doing 45 miles an hour through town, and there's not a whole lot we can do. Through our traffic code, we can cite them for careless driving. There is only so many things that we can write on private lots for, and those things are DUI, unsafe backing, reckless driving, careless driving, and so on. There's not a whole lot of charges we can do. We cannot enforce speeding violations other than careless driving.
So as a chief, is your preference for it to not be any higher than 20, but if council discusses lowering it even further, you would be okay with that?
I would be okay with that, yes.
Counselor Brawls?
Yeah, first of all, I think 20 miles an hour is better than 40, so, but I'd like to get your input on the bicycle code. I guess it bothers me that you can go through a stoplight going, what, 15 miles an hour?
Okay.
I guess I'd like your input about what you think about the bicycle codes.
Okay, my, you wanna give my professional opinion on this? That would be, I think it would bring more harm than good currently. I understand Mr. Johnson's concern, but then again, I have to worry about the motorists as well and the bicyclists. We have a hard time with this, running code through town. We obviously slow at intersections and move at a quicker speed in a law enforcement vehicle or a fire vehicle, any emergency vehicle. I have concerns with people rolling stop signs and using stoplights as stop signs, just because everybody's got their own personal opinion on this. I've been riding motorcycles for a very long time, very similar to bicycles, and not all the motorists see me. You have to be very defensive. So my current opinion would be, I don't think it is in the city's best interest to adopt this. That's the best I got for you.
I think part of also what we put into the communication is that we have a group of cyclists who are very educated, and they're very aware of their surroundings, and, you know, all of them, when they read this, you know, have very similar comments as Eric in regards to how slow you do have to get for the stop sign, which is much slower than the state allows, and some stuff like that. So they're very responsible, but we also have cyclists who are not. And I think part of the concern is, is we already, we need to do better with education, but there's still only so far education is gonna get with some of those that aren't as respectful of what the rules and regulations are, and we're worried about that conflict that can create between the motorist and the cyclist. And so, some motorists are gonna get kind of grumpy potentially when this whole time we've been saying they're supposed to follow the rules, and now suddenly they're seeing them go through stop signs and stoplights, and it can make them uneasy. But again, these are just some of the concerns we have. There is, based on the email and Don's comments, from a cycling community perspective, they very much desire to see this change, and I think everyone in that community would probably be a very responsible rider with that change.
Okay.
And one more thing, if you don't mind, Mayor. Just to add on that, I think if this is something that we do, I think our number of serious bodily injury accidents will increase, and there's a potential for worse than that.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about a 5,000-pound vehicle and a 20-pound bicycle.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. You may not wanna leave yet. Counselor Grealio?
Two comments, if I may, Mayor. One, I agree with the city manager that, I've seen a lot of people riding on the wrong side, and I don't know how we're gonna educate those people, but there is a lot of them, you know, and I don't see how you can get to 20 miles an hour in a parking lot. Is it, we're talking about a parking lot, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The 20 miles an hour, is that the parking lot you said?
So we're talking about vehicle speeds. When we're talking about that, we're looking at actually giving a speed limit within private parking lots. Now, for example, I'll just give you one example, because I know it's hard to see somebody doing 45 miles an hour through Payless, but that's not the parking lot I'm talking about. Let me use example of City Market.
Yeah.
Or the McDonald's area. That is what people are using as a, basically a through street.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, and Chief, once the research is done and you all figure out what speed limit we're going to put in these parking lots, will we have any signage available so people will know what the speed limits are in a private lot, or are you allowed to, or is that something that people automatically know that in City of Alamosa, you can't go faster than 20 miles per hour?
I'll let Eric answer the signage question, but I wanna make sure, we're not doing studies, so it's just, it's a council discussion. We don't want it to be higher than 20 miles per hour, and so it's, you guys need to determine if you're good with 20, or if you would want a lower speed limit. You could also start out at 20, and if we're still seeing some issues, lower it the next year, or, you know, something like that. that.
Thanks for that clarification. That's good to know that we could talk more about that.
And, and just to be clear, I think that Counselor Grego is right, that when you're in a small parking lot, you're not gonna do twenty, you, you're just not. But it's the City Market parking lot, the Walmart parking lot, the parking lot out by Aaron's, those big parking lots that people do pick up ahead of speed, and, and I don't know that twenty is an unreasonable number, in getting through those big parking lots. But we certainly, we have a problem right now, that people are doing a lot more than twenty through there. And, and as, with respect to posting signage, we certainly could post signs, if we wanted to, or require the, the parking lot owner to post signs. Probably, they'd be signs that we would want to provide, because it is a city ordinance providing the speed limit. That may be the best way, especially in parking lots that are prone to that, to make sure that the public is educated. Otherwise, it's the same concept as the fact that the speed limit on city streets is twenty-five miles an hour, unless otherwise posted. So, you don't need speed limit signs in every city street. You just have, I mean, you're, as a motorist, you are put to the knowledge that the traffic code limits, speed limits, unless otherwise posted to twenty. I think I'm right, I think it's twenty-five.
It's thirty.
It's thirty, see? You, you have to know one thing or the other, but you don't always have to have, you don't have to have a sign to be able to enforce that. So, it's really a function of how much education we want to provide.
Okay. Counsel Grego?
One more comment, if I may, Mayor. Can we enforce speeding on private property?
We can, if we specifically call that out in our ordinance to allow us to do that. We enforce all kinds of regulations on private property. I mean, that, that's not an unusual use of the police power.
Because I've been in other communities where it, there was even a fender bender on private property, and the police don't even show up, on private property.
Well, most places do not have any kind of, and we don't currently have any regulations about private property, other than the ones the chief talked about, and those are specifically called out in our ordinance. Right now, says we can enforce careless driving, reckless driving, unsafe backing, whatever that handful of things were. We are adding a twenty mile an hour speed limit to that handful of things that we do enforce.
All right. Thank you.
And Chief, there's a difference between what communities send an officer out to, to collect a report, versus where we have some people report collisions, or other things, either online, or other things like, so some of the larger communities don't have the manpower, for every time there's an accident in a parking lot, or something like that. So, they handle it a little bit differently.
And I, I would, as we move forward and we look more into this, I would like for us at least inform and educate the public, once we decide on a speed limit, whether it's using, using signage, or either making sure that the information is posted on our websites, or utilizing the mail and the bills that people get out for their utility bills that come from the city. I think that way, it'd help with any pushback we get in the future, from people who are saying, well, how can you tell us it's ten miles per hour, or twenty miles per hour, when there's nothing posted? And we thought it was thirty, or what have you. So, I just think it would be very important for us to find a way to educate the public as we move forward. Just my thoughts. Okay? Alrighty. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, counsel. Counsel Grego?
With that, I'll, I'll make the motion. We passed on first reading, ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, and set it for a public hearing on October sixteenth, at seven o'clock, or sooner after.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next, under the agenda, is city manager legal. The first reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is pretty much a housekeeping ordinance. This relates to ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-eighteen, where the city annexed sixty acres over just south of Airport Road, into the city, and through a drafting error, the ordinance, when it was recorded, contained a legal description that was not the correct legal description. So, this ordinance merely corrects that by putting in the correct legal description as the attachment to the annexed property.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Counsel Brawls?
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number two-three dash two-zero-one-nine.
Second. Okay. You want to set it for a public hearing?
Yes, and set it for a public hearing on October sixteenth.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next, we have a public hearing and a second reading of ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-nineteen.
Mayor, this is another housekeeping ordinance. As we discussed briefly on first reading, it just makes a lot more administrative sense for the city treasurer and finance director to be conveying delinquent assessments to the, or delinquent payments on enforcement of nuisance violations, to this county for collection on the tax rolls, because that's what the finance director does for all of the other delinquent assessments that the city has, and the current ordinance needs to be changed, to make that practice consistent with the ordinance. So, I think unless there are questions, a public hearing can be opened, and then council can take action.
Okay. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I realized last time, that we did not ask Holly, our city clerk, if she had any concerns about this, and I was just wondering, Holly, if there were any challenges you foresaw, or anything like that, if this ordinance moves forward.
No, I don't have any.
Okay. All right, at this time, thank you, Counselor Daniel. At this time, I would like to open up a public hearing, in reference to ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-nineteen. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing that no one has come to the podium, I would now close the public hearing, and bring it back to council. Yes, Counselor Veho?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-nineteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome, thank you. Up next, on the agenda, is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Yes, Counselor Brawls?
I'll make a report. I mean, I, I attended the senior citizens board meeting, this last week, and reports are doing well. They, I, I like their leadership, and so far, they're financially sound. So, I think they offer a great service to our community, and I appreciate them, and, and what they do for our community.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls, and thank you for serving on that committee, and providing us that report. We appreciate it. Okay? No other committee reports? All right, up next, then, we have staff announcements.
So, I have a short one, while Don makes his way up for a tiny bit longer one, but it's a good announcement. Mine, not so much. We had made an offer to hire someone for our city planner position, and unfortunately, that's fallen through. And so, we're kind of back to the drawing board. I think with Harry's promotion to the, the public works director, and we're getting ready to backfill the building inspector, we're gonna take a little bit of a breather, and, and see where we are, and, and then decide how we want to post the position, and if it's to stay as a planner, or if we want to kind of refocus it a little bit. So, we're just taking a bit of a breather, but it's disappointing. We were, we were excited to have Marlon join our team, and we thought he'd be a great addition, and we've got some big projects we could have him work on next year, including that housing assessment study. So, we're just gonna take a breather, and then figure out where to go from here.
Thank you, Heather. Chief?
Mayor, council. Back in June, we learned of an opportunity with XL Energy. It's called XL Energy's Community Resilience Initiative, which is a first-of-the-kind program, which they are wanting to demonstrate how stored battery power can serve a community, or help the electrical grid. So, we submitted an application, or a proposal, to XL Energy, which basically would provide backup power for the rec center, in the event of a power loss, since it is designated as an evacuation center. XL Center representative down a couple of weeks ago, reviewed the site plan and everything, and then we received notification that there were twenty communities in the state, or twenty projects submitted by thirteen different communities. We were one of seven community projects selected for this. So, where it stands right now, is they're working through a few details, the design, and basically, the way it would work, it'd be powered off of the solar system out there by the, the rec center, go into the batteries, and then that could also be used to either go to the electrical grid, if not needed, or go into the rec center, in the event of a power outage. So, what would happen is, the solar panels will charge the batteries during the day, and then use the batteries at night, when the electrical is needed, and then come back down, and then recharge the cycle. So, it would give us a continuous power out there in, in the event of an extended power loss. Moving forward, we've got a couple little details that they've got to work on, and it has to go towards, be proposed to the Public Utilities Commission, early in December, they're hoping. If, once that's done, and goes through the steps of the Public Utilities Commission, once that's approved, if everything goes, then they will start construction on the project in early twenty-twenty-one, so.
All right.
And we'd like to point out, Andy's not the only one that knows how to write a grant application.
Awesome. Counsel Grego?
What size of a grant are we looking at, and do we need any kind of matching funds, or?
There might be a little site prep cost, and we discussed that a little bit, where we would have to bring in some, basically road base or fill to bring it up. Because what that is, is it's gonna set in basically a big shipping container, is where those batteries will set. And then XL Energy will take care of running all the, the lines and everything, and tying it into the system that's needed. So, probably our, and our end would just be the site prep for that container to set on, so.
So, what amount is the grant?
The grant is the equipment, so.
Oh, the equipment.
Yeah, yeah, they're providing the equipment.
What's the price on it? Do we got a dollar figure in it?
Uh, they haven't revealed a dollar figure, Charlie, as far as that goes.
Okay.
But I've got a feeling it's pretty expensive.
Oh, well, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much for that report, and, and thank you for applying for the grant, because that's just like money to us, when we don't have to use that out of the budget to have.
Yeah, and it's where that facility serves as a evacuation center. It needs some sort of backup power, so this is one way to answer that.
All right. Well, thank you. Keep up the great work.
You bet. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Andy, Charlie says you're rubbing off on the team over there, in a good way. Okay. All right. Any more staff announcements? Heather?
I think, I'm not sure if Counsel Grego was gonna say this, we're, we're gonna be sending an email probably tomorrow, thanking XL, as we're talking about XL. Counsel Grego noticed that they're putting up some of the visual shields on their fence, so it, it looks a little bit better out there. And I know that was something that, that Counsel Grego had brought up to them in the past, and it looks, it's exciting. So, we'll send a email just thanking them for listening to those comments, and, and following through, and I'll make sure to copy counsel on that. Appreciation.
Yeah, thank you, Heather. Yes, we, we met with them at CML, and we meet with them manually, when we get up there, and I had talked to, I believe his name is Jerome, and I don't know if that's, if he's the main boss, but I, I explained to him some of the stuff that was going on in the community, and how his neighbors are really doing landscaping and stuff, and that his facility there, it, it's a nice facility, and that they, they maintain it, but it's, it's probably, how do I say it, it's maybe behind, and it's, because it's been sitting there for a lot of years. So, Jerome listened, I guess, and now they're gonna cover up all that stuff, and I think they went by and saw what the hospital did, and that's, you know, and plus, it's an interest to our community. So, I'm glad to see that they're, they're listening to us. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Counsel Veho?
Are we on council comment, Mayor?
Uh, yes, we're on council comments now.
Okay. But, as you send that email, Heather, could you send another email to them, and ask them if they can take care of the power pole behind Colorado Sports, in that alleyway? It's like, it's getting dangerous.
Let me, we can. I, I think we've reported it in the past as well, and so, I don't know what more authority we have beyond reporting it, per the franchise agreement, but let me double-check and make sure, my assumption that we've been reporting that, because I, I know I've met with the owner of the previous J.C. Penney's, probably three years ago, and, and reported it then, and Kathy had met with Karli Lucci two times, since she started, and we've reported it. So, let me just follow up on that, and, and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Do we have any other counsel comments? Okay, if not, I have a few comments. First, I would like to thank staff and counsel for the ones who showed up and went on the trail tour this past week, the, is it Mom Trail? I think that it's gonna be a great addition to the city, such a beautiful view, and I'm quite sure that a lot of the residents are gonna get a lot of use out of it, and I, I want to thank you for that opportunity. The other thing I would like to thank staff and counsel is for the retreat, showing up this past weekend, and sharing a lot of helpful, thoughtful ideas and suggestions that have helped make our city even better. And also, I'd like to thank staff and counsel, who've come out to, I believe we've had, is it, three street fun, community events, to where the community can come in and, and give feedback on that. So, just want you to know that your support and being there really makes a big difference, including staff educating the community. And finally, I see we have Ellen O'Malley back in the audience, with the Valley Courier. Welcome back again. You know, they have this saying about the valleys, like, you never really leave, so you, you come back. So, you're proof of that. But we know you're here for a short time, but we're really glad to see you back with the Valley Courier here, covering the stories in the valley, so.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure.
You're welcome. Okay, I think that's all I have, under counsel comments. So, now, we are about to go into executive session. Counselor Veho?
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for two issues. Number one, to receive legal advice from the city attorney concerning the negotiating class, and the end of the opioid multi-district litigation, and concerning the craft intersection contact litigation, and to determine positions, and instruct negotiators with respect to the resolution of that lawsuit.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Start voting. Okay. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
We will now enter into executive session, and no further business will be discussed after we leave the executive session.